And Councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And I'll invite everyone to say the pledge of allegiance. Lady for Scott Baker.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to which stands one nation under God in the liberty of this all.
Thank you. Um, I would accept a motion to excuse Salim, Councilmember Salim Siddiqui.
I make a motion that we excuse Councilmember Salim Siddiqui from this meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Do you need a roll call on that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Please do so.
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Motion carried to excuse Councilmember Siddiqui from this meeting.
Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of the agenda.
And as a reminder, Mayor Garrett, the item for the presentation from Representative Kyra Bolden needs to be removed.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
This is for the, I make a mo-, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
With the removal.
With the removal of the presentation from State Representative Kyra Bolden.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the agenda with the one change that was noted.
Thank you. Um, next up is the approval of the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after the consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item B, the July 27th, 2020 council meetings, as I have a correction for that one.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. So the discussion would be that you're taking out B and we'll discuss it after this. Okay. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, so pulling out the July 27th, 2020 council meeting.
Yep. Um, if we go to page nine, and I know there was an update sent out of the meetings today via email, but it was, this same error was in that one as well. On page nine, you know, I'm scrolling to it. Under section C. Where was it? Yeah. In the, in the, the second paragraph down, it says homeowner with taxable value of approximately $57,000 will cost $262. That's actually $67,000. So if you can get that corrected about, I would appreciate it.
Okay, no problem. Six, seven, Bruce?
Six, seven, yes.
Seven, okay.
Thank you.
So do we now make a, Scott, do we now make a motion to accept that with the correction?
Yeah, that has to be, that's a separate motion.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the July 27th, 2020 city council meeting agenda with, or minutes with the aforementioned correction.
Second.
So it's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion about that? About the council meeting on July 27th, 2020, 2020 minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, next up is the consideration to approve the monthly disbursement reports for the month of July 2020.
Well, I make a motion to approve the dispersments for the month of July 2020. This reflects the expedition expenditures from the general fund, which include police and fire services, recreation department, major roads, local roads, water and sewer services, and for the downtown development authority. Do I need to read further?
The total disbursement amount.
Okay, total disbursement amount for the general fund, $374,526.27. Fund 202 for major roads, $6,411.99. Fund 203 for local roads, $6,411.99. For Fund 258, the capital fund zero. Fund 494 Downtown Development Authority is $5,712.89. Fund 592 Water and Sewer, $56,409.27. Total dispersments, $449,472.41.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
A quick question. So we've been making a lot of corrections since we did our 2020 budget. Did we make any major adjustments to all of these funds or what, what's the reason why we're adjusting this again?
We're not.
This is just the dispersment. This is what we gave out, or this is what's been paid out.
Paid out, okay. Not gave, okay, paid out, okay. My mistake. I thought this was a correction like the, the last meeting we had.
No, sir.
Okay. Never mind.
So this will be going through the dispersment pages to see if there's anything that you would like to have a explanation on.
Nope, gone through it. It's fine.
Anyone else?
I'm good.
I'm good. Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Motion carried, carried for the dispersment report.
Thank you. Next up, we have the consideration of accepting the departmental reports.
I'll make a motion to accept the departmental reports.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussions?
The only discussion I, item I have on that is it's, it's, it's great to see the code enforcer, you know, doing his thing. He and Kelda are, um, you know, starting to catch up on, you know, huge, huge backlog that we've had for years. And it's, it's good to see. I was reading through the list and he's found a lot of stuff and, and I personally have uh, seen a lot of improvements already taking place from things that he's, he's enforced along Southfield Road. So he's, he's definitely having an effect. Things are starting to look better. So that's, that's, I think that's great.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carried for the departmental reports.
Thank you. So we don't have the presentation. Um, I will open up the meeting for a public comment for items that are on the agenda. And speakers are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone that would like to make a comment? You see anybody, Kelda?
No hands raised.
Okie dokie. So next up, we have a public hearing for the 2021, 2025 Recreation Master Plan. And it looks like Matt, yeah, Matt.
Hello. Good to see you all.
And Megan, I hear from Giffo's to, they have a presentation for us. So Cheryl, can you share, let them share their screen with us, please?
I think they should be enabled already.
I think so, too.
Okay. So. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Wait. Alright, so I'm gonna run through this PowerPoint presentation. It's gonna give you an idea of what was, everything that was updated. A quick discussion. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to, Megan and I will be happy to answer them at the end. So I will get started. So, let's see. Project Kickoff, this was the outline of the Recreation Master Plan. It was done per the DNR specifications, which the following sections, their A through G were all updated. I'm gonna go through each of those on the following slides, so I won't read through them individually now. So that was, that's the bulk of the plan, which we're gonna go through. There was a couple of public input opportunities, tonight being one of them. And then, once we're done tonight, the plan will be finalized and sent to the DNR. So I'm gonna go through some of the items that were updated. Starting with a project kickoff, where we met with some of the staff, city council, some of the other stakeholders. Had some discussions about the scope of work and all the information that would be updated. We got a little overview on the Parks Department. So the community description was updated, administrative structure. We updated the inventory of the existing parks. That includes the accessibility and the granted facilities with. The resource inventory was updated and then planning process, goals and objectives for the action items were all updated. So the administrative structure had a lot, had more to do with the budgeting items, which are, are specification and are found in the document. This is a little glimpse at what the accessibility evaluation looked like. So you'll find that each park was evaluated. And then there's a list of all the facilities that the city has received grant money for, which is a requirement of the DNR. So that's, that's nice to see that less things can you to grow. The resource inventory was updated per 2019 standards, which were available at the time. So you'll find that in these tables here. And planning, the description of the planning process was updated to include all the public input opportunities. Goals and objectives, where the section was updated and then they were then tied into, each park was then assigned with proposed improvements based on the public input and discussions with staff. This is a little update on the B action program. You can see that it was organized per park. So there was a couple of studies that the Recreation Director wanted to take a look at. And then some other park improvements, which are listed here. And then they're also budgeted out over a five-year window. Kind of aligned with the life of the plan and also with the capital. Then there were a few public input opportunities, as I mentioned earlier. One of them was an online survey. The other one was an open house that was held last year in December. And then the third opportunity for public input is today, where if anyone from the public has anything to add or comment on this, we're happy to hear that. As I mentioned, once we're done here today, we'll prepare and submit the plan to the DNR. So that's just a brief overview of what we updated.
You're not sharing the screening. I knew that was gonna happen. Sorry if you hear something in the background. Um, did anyone have any questions? Or comments about the recreation plan? No one?
I'm good.
Okay, well, I will close the, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Megan. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for putting that together. It was good.
Do we, I mean, and don't, don't kill me because I do read my emails and, and I'll say this ahead of time. But do we receive this presentation or will we be receiving the presentation?
I believe that we sent it out right as the meeting was starting, but I'd be happy to send that over. I think Megan actually did about five minutes into the meeting.
Oh, okay.
I've got it. I'll, I can send it out to everyone.
Okay, so I don't look bad as I'm saying that?
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, how, I'm looking quick, oh, I'm looking quickly to see reduce for 20,000. It's, okay, I see it. Thank you.
Okay, so then I'm gonna close. There is someone who's gonna close the public hearing. I might have said that already, but never hurts to say it twice. We don't have anyone in chat that's asking a question about it?
No.
Okay. So then, um, let's move into our action requests for considerations and approval. First up is gonna be the resolution for adopting a Recreation Master Plan for 2021, 2025 for the city of Lathir Village. Anybody jump in there who would like to do the present, would like to speak on that? Suzie, Cheryl?
Well, in regards to the plan, it's a requirement from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund in order to apply for any of their grant funding. So this is our five-year plan. The resolution and the public hearing and the opportunity for a public comment were a part of the component parts that you have to meet in order to submit your application to the Michigan DNR.
Thank you. Who would like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution for the Recreation Plans for 2021 to 2025.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, next up is a resolution accepting Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, grant award for the city of Lathir Village Complete Street Improvements Program.
Mayor and council, if you recall, we were awarded this grant through our partnership with SimCOG for the Transportation Alternatives Program called TAP for the bicycle path and bike repair station. So the total project cost is $80,000 and that encompasses the $60,000 grant with a 25% local match that is going to be provided through the local road fund and the DDA. So you have a resolution before you to accept the Transportation Alternatives Program grant and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the negotiated contract.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution for adopting the trap, the Transportation Alternatives Program Grant award for the city of Lathir Village Complete Streets Improvement Project and authorize the mayor and the city administration to sign.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I'm just really happy to see this come to pass. I remember when I got SimCOG to come and meet with Suzie and I think Anne was in that meeting and just to see, just to know that Suzie, you pushed it through. It's wonderful. So I'm excited.
Was there any further discussions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Roll call, Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, next up is a resolution approving traffic control order. Yeah, that's it.
This appears on page 97 of your agenda packet. And as mentioned in the study session, a traffic study was conducted and identified high traffic volumes eastbound on Sunny Brook Avenue, east of Southfield Road. And, um, these are drivers that were attempting to cut over across I-696. Chief McKee has issued a traffic control order and requested the installation of a no-through traffic signs there. In addition, I wanted to point out that they identified that contributing to the problem was the navigating systems that are available to direct drivers to take a residential route. So they have been successful in contacting the navigation systems such as Google Ways, MapQuest, and Apple Maps to have them change their routing suggestions. So the motion before you is to approve the traffic control order to install the no-through traffic signs and prohibit through traffic on Sunny Brook Avenue, east of Southfield Road.
Make a motion to approve the traffic control order to install no-through traffic signs and prohibit through traffic on Sunny Brook Avenue, east of Southfield Road.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Oakland County Animal Shelter Services and Disposal Interlocal Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. This appears on page 101 of your packet. And this is a, a new contract with the Oakland County Animal Shelter Services. You had a previous agreement for three years. This is for a new three-year agreement that will be for 2020 through 2021, 22, I'm sorry. And, and there's only, I think it's like a dollar increase or a $2 increase in regard to the boarding fees and the disposal fees. So the motion before you is to approve the animal services, animal shelter services for disposal. The interlocal agreement with Oakland County and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Animal Shelter Service and Disposal Interlocal Agreement with Oakland County and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the, the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion around it? Hearing none. Can we have roll call, please?
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have sanitary retention tank emergency repair.
This appears on page 110 in your agenda packet. And if you recall, I sent a communication that we received from Oakland County Water Resources Commission in regards to their maintenance and support of the sanitary retention tank. And they identified that there was an emergency repair that was needed for that facility and it was a little over 14,000, which exceeded my authorization. So I advise you that we are making the emergency repair and what you have before you is the actual approval as required by council for the grinder pump.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency repair for the grinder pump.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I'm, I'm sorry, roll call. The good old days.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the second reading and adoption of fireworks ordinance.
Let Scott take the next two since they're ordinances. Thanks. So this is, there is no substantial changes from last month when this was introduced for a first reading. As I stated last month, this ordinance is in response to a number of complaints that the city had received. And due to some inconsistencies with our current ordinance and the state law, the city was actually prevented from enforcing its ordinance. On probably the most prominent times when fireworks are used. So this ordinance update amends our local ordinance to mirror state law so that our local department can issue citations under local ordinance for, for any violation.
Thank you. I'll, I'll make a motion to accept an ordinance to amend chapter 46 miscellaneous offenses provisions, forfeitures and penalties. Amending Article 3 offenses against the person in section 46-81, use and sale of fireworks. And 46-82, permit for use and sale of fireworks. Am I missing something?
Second.
Oh, okay.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, we have the extending the sunset period for the marijuana establishment.
Thank you, this Madam Mayor. So this is the second reading. There, again, there have been no substantial changes from the first reading. As indicated last month, this ordinance is, it's the identical ordinance that was presented 18 months ago. However, it does extend the sunset provision an additional 12 months. And the rationale behind that, as council is aware, is that based on the findings of the Marijuana Subcommittee, the city has directed myself, the planner and staff to prepare ordinances that would allow for specific types, different types and numbers of marijuana facilities within the city of Lathir Village. So this ordinance sunset extension allows time for us to, to adequately and appropriately draft those ordinances.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the second reading and to adopt and set, set, that the second reading in order of ordinance to amend chapter eight businesses adding article six marijuana establishment, section 18. That 281 marijuana establishments prohibited, to prohibit marijuana establishments within the boundaries of the city pursuant to the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act and to provide penalties for violation of this ordinance.
For second.
Thank you. It's been moved in its second. Is there any discussion around it? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have the city administrator report.
Thank you. I just want to remind council that for the month of September, because of the Labor Day holiday falling on the first Monday, September seventh, your meetings will actually be on September fourteenth and September twenty-eighth. Also, the Your Town Magazine, the electronic copy is available. The hard copy should be received soon. It's subject to the mail, which is iffy. And we have a number of minor building upgrades going on. One that is more significant is the community room kitchen, which was included in the capital improvement plan. Those new cabinets are being installed as we speak. But all the work is underway in the lobby area as well as in the dance studio in terms of painting. The lobby area, we're installing some brighter tiles and LED lights to just make it look a little more welcoming. The Santa Barbara Water Main Project is scheduled to begin soon and it should be completed around the first of October. Notices have been sent to the residents along Santa Barbara and Roseland and letting them know that they may have some temporary disruption of their water service when the new connections are being put in place. And we're very pleased to recognize our team member of the month is Officer Charles Becker. He's being recognized and I learned that our motorcycle division is the second oldest in the state. So, that's another area to be proud of here in Lathrow Village. And I received from Michigan Municipal League, I don't know if you can see it through the glass. The
Nice.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The twenty-twenty Community Builder Award from the Michigan Municipal League, I was supposed to receive it at their conference, which had to be canceled due to the pandemic situation.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Yeah, congratulations. Very nice. And the clerk is well aware that the election is coming on November third, our presidential general election. People are already coming in for their, sign up for their voter applications. So, it's already hustle and bustle time. The plant Miranda is conducting their audit. I'm impressed that Pam is able to sit here with us right now. There's been a lot of going on in regards to that. The police department, they have started the three-month trial period for the twelve-hour shifts. That should end about October, early October. And we received the notification from their union business agent that they are ready to start the negotiations for the contracts. The POAM and COAM, so that's the police officers and the command officers, both contracts expire the end of this year. As you know, the recreation master plan, the public hearing was today. And we're anticipating that the registration for the parks and facilities will resume starting in September, depending on what new orders, effective orders we get from the governor and the county health department. Presently, indoor facilities are limited to ten people. So, that was still puts some major constraints on the community room. And we're very thrilled to have brought on two new interns, Jordan Williams and Megan Menifee. They've started and are already active in a number of projects. The DDA and Community Development, the planning commission meeting for this month is canceled. And Corey, who was an intern, a volunteer intern, is now in a paid internship and she's working both with the DDA and recreation. And I snatch her too whenever I can. The loving Lathrow Village had a nice response of twelve applications. So, those are going to be reviewed by the DDA committee and provides opportunities for grant funding ranging between five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars for some of our local businesses. That's all I have.
Thank you. City Attorney, do you have anything for us?
Nothing for me, no.
Wondering.
I had a lot last month and you'll hear from me in a little bit.
Oh, true. Reports of boards, commissions and committees. Are you talking, Bruce, to us?
Sorry about that. I put you on mute before when I had to yell at the dog who's upstairs in her cage whining. Yeah, from the infrastructure committee, just wanted to let people know that the fixlv roads dot com site is, can be reviewed. It's up live. It's the same web address that we used last time, but it's been updated with all of the pertinent information for this November's election and with respect to roads and ditches. So, I encourage all residents to go out there to that site, fixlv roads dot com. Check it out. It's got the resolution. It's got details. It's got the infrastructure recommendation to council. It's got some videos. It also has an online calculator where you can click a button that says view my cost and it'll show you how much that will cost you. The proposal will cost you per year based upon the taxable value of your home. So, you don't have to do any calculation yourself. You can go right out there and it'll provide you with that information. So, review it, look at it. If you have questions, you can always contact me or anybody on the infrastructure, infrastructure team.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just a quick up, quick update from the school board. So, there's still no response regarding the information that we had requested from them. So, I guess I'm gonna have to, again, try to figure out after they get into school, after they get their online learning active. I will approach them again and ensure that they understand that we still need an update.
Is there a quick question about that? Are you sending an email to the entire board or just to, you know, are you sending an email?
I'm gonna wait until they start school again because I think they're really busy right now. So, they're actually trying to activate their online learning. So, those of you got the information or saw it on the news. So, basically, and this is also on the district's website. So, they're gonna start the school year according to, obviously, the district website. All students in the district will engage in remote learning only. And that's similar to how they ended the school year. And the main reason, obviously, students within the age of nineteen, they had a significantly high rate of infection for COVID nineteen. So, I think to keep everyone safe, they've decided to go online learning because those numbers continue to go up. And the bottom line is, it's just a high risk for students and for teachers as well as administrators. So, you're being extra cautious on that.
Thank you. Any other committees?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just a quick update on Simcock. Not a lot to update, but those that, new Kathleen Lamatta, Lamatta, she is retiring as the, as the director after almost two or three decades of being the director. So, that was a big deal. But what I wanted to really bring up is that there is a developing trends, a monitoring, developing trends for communities throughout southeast Michigan and it's, there's, it's a webinar on August the twenty-sixth that will help communities monitor and, you know, track development and how to develop. And it also give us several examples of using building data and et cetera, et cetera, to develop communities. One thing that was really interesting that we, that I should probably send to you, Dr. Cheryl, is that there is a survey that they have put into place where we can actually monitor. It's called the Local Government Budget Priority Study. And they were being proactive because of the COVID nineteen being significantly impacting to, to our state and local and even regional economies. This survey actually goes out to the, to our citizens. And they get to answer questions beforehand that talks about, you know, something happens next year where we don't, heaven forbid, get our revenue sharing, what services are important to them. It's kind of proactive that I'll send to you so that you can, and it's real simple. It's about eight questions. But it's very detailed on what's important to you, ways that we could make up for it tax-wise or whatever. So, I will send that to you. And lastly, they have something called a park finder where all the local parks are on this park finder. I don't think we're on that as of yet. So, we need to think about registering some of maybe one or two of our parks on there. But that's it. But that webinar is coming up, August twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for boards and committees, commissions? Are you talking to us, Ian? If you or something's going on with your audio. Nope. So, what I'm gonna do while you're getting your technical difficulties together, I'm going to move down unfinished or any new business. None. Ian, are you ready to talk yet? Nope. Okay, so, nice. To a public comment. Speakers are limited to two minutes.
No, no hand raised.
No, I'm reading Ian's lips. I'm saying, can you hear me now or? No. Okay, are there any comments, mayor, council comments? One is, don't forget that this Saturday, that locals church in the city of Lathrow Village will be doing the annual, yep, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you.
Will be doing the backpack giveaway. However, they have extended it this year. So, they're gonna be also distributing food and giving you the opportunity to get COVID tested. Though I think that it's very important that we get tested as the most excruciating test that you could, well, I guess there's some other ones. But it's uncomfortable, but it's needed. So, if you have not been COVID tested or you would like to get tested, you have an opportunity this Saturday starting at ten AM at city hall. Ian, you had something? Seriously?
Hello.
Okay.
You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. How did you do anything? Oh, my God. All right. So, no update from the Marijuana Committee. But obviously, if we had any new data come in, we would get together, discuss that data. And if we needed to present it to council, we would. So, that is still a dynamic process, but everything we've submitted to council is in. And if any additional information does come in, we'll certainly share it with you.
So, I do have one question. If you say, or council votes to say, yeah, they want marijuana business, can we, is it all in or can you choose specifically what businesses only are allowed here?
Choose. We have to choose because of the ordinance based on what we're trying to finalize or discuss. It's not all in.
So, in the ordinance, just for clarity for myself, you can say you only want testing.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And in the study session two weeks ago, I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think we recommended to Scott that to, for purposes of at least drafting the initial ordinance, I think we recommended two testing and two provisioning centers.
Yes. And that's why we said no micro-business, no growth centers, all that, right? Because it just didn't fit. That was just an open discussion.
So, technically, a council person could vote it down no just because they didn't want distribute, what's it called, disbursement?
Provisioning.
Provisioning or adult use. Just make it.
Provisioning center, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Just, I was, I was wondering the same thing and totally forgot. So, thank you for asking that.
No problem. So, if there's no other comments, then I would entertain a motion to enter into a closed session pursuant to the MCL fifteen point two-six-eight, is that an H or B? I cannot see it. To discuss privileged written legal memorandum.
I thought we had council comments before we close.
I just did council comments.
Oh, I thought it was bored. Sorry. One last observation. So, got contacted again by the neighbor that is concerned about the wall in the alley. And we need an update on that, number one. Number two, the owner should please remove bricks from the backyard of the resident because they're basically storing those bricks in the backyard. And that should not be happening if nothing's gonna be done. So, please have the code enforcement go out there and talk to the owner and see if we could try to figure something out. But we do need an update on the wall.
And I have a quick comment, too. I, there's been a lot of complaints about trash cans in the open. And not only are there trash cans in the open, in the same place, now there's, there's brooms and buckets and things. And it's, it's just, so I'm just wondering how we are handling, are we doing, how are we gonna get this under control? Because now they're storing garbage in the, in the front. So.
It's code enforcement. Just reported to the city and.
We have. This, this one person has been reported at least two or three times. So, I'm not sure, but now because someone has saw, you know, has seen them do it, now they're starting to do it. So, I'm, I'm gonna call, call it in again tomorrow and we'll see what happens. Getting, getting bad.
Okay. Thank you. Well, Ashley, why don't you shoot Cheryl a email? And if you don't mind to CC me on it with the address of the complaints.
I will. It's no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to make the motion to go on the closed door session?
Before we make a motion, I just wanna keep city manager and mayor in mind that I have a pickup, so I will be back momentarily. So, please forgive me for my tardiness. But I do make a motion to adjourn this meeting ASAP.
I second.
Thank you. Consider us adjourned.